Conduct the second reading of the ordinance.
Yes, this is the second reading of ordinance number nineteen dash two one eight nine. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cupertino amending City Code chapters sixteen point zero two, sixteen point zero four, sixteen point zero six, sixteen point sixteen, sixteen point two zero, sixteen point two four, sixteen point four zero, sixteen point five four, and sixteen point five eight, and adding chapters sixteen point six two, sixteen point six four, and sixteen point six eight of Title Sixteen of the Cupertino Municipal Code adopting the twenty nineteen California Building Residential Electrical Mechanical Plumbing Energy Fire Historical Building Code, existing building code referenced Standards Code and Green Building Standards Code with certain exceptions, deletions, modifications, additions, and amendments.
Great, thank you very much.
Great. Is there any council discussion of this second reading?
I'd like to move that ordinance number nineteen dash two one eight nine be read by title only and that the city clerk's reading constitute the second reading thereof.
Second. Vote with your lights. What oh.
Motion carries unanimously.
I move that ordinance number nineteen dash two one eight nine be enacted.
Second. Vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Great, that was fast, so now we are on to item nine. Consideration of Municipal Code Amendments to the Cupertino Municipal Code Title Five, adopting new policies regulating the sale of tobacco such as requiring a local permit to sell tobacco products, prohibiting the sale of flavored tobacco, prohibiting new businesses from selling tobacco near schools, and reducing tobacco retailer density, prohibiting tobacco sales at pharmacies and in vending machines, and limiting storefront signage. Do we have a staff report?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Katie Nomura, Assistant to the City Manager. I also have with me Leslie Zellers. She's our consultant from the county that has been helping with this project. So Leslie will start off the presentation and I will conclude going over our outreach.
Great. Thank you very much. I'm happy to be here.
Is it shining?
Okay. So you may recall seeing me three months ago. I'm slightly bigger now. We were here for a study session at the beginning of August talking about this issue and policy options. Staff have been very busy since then conducting extensive outreach, which you'll hear more about from Katie, and we're returning tonight with a proposed ordinance for your consideration. Just to go over some of the brief facts that we have already mentioned, tobacco remains the number one preventable cause of death and disease in the United States. Santa Clara County Health Department has a Healthy Cities Program which encourages cities to adopt policies to address these issues, including tobacco control, and the City of Cupertino received a grant and technical assistance from the county which is allowing staff to conduct this outreach and help move this item forward. In Santa Clara County specifically, one in eight deaths are due to smoking and one in ten youth in the county use tobacco products, including e-cigarettes. I'm sure you've heard a lot in the news recently about e-cigarette use. The Surgeon General has called it an epidemic. There was a seventy-eight percent increase in high school use of e-cigarettes from one year to another, and in Santa Clara County, one in three teens report trying e-cigarettes. So tonight, the ordinance that we have for your consideration, there are a few main parts. The mayor read the full title. I'm going to go over some of the key provisions. All tobacco retailers in the city, there are approximately twenty-three retailers right now, would be required to get, obtain a local permit from the city to sell tobacco products, and they would no longer be allowed to sell any flavored tobacco products. Existing retailers could maintain their locations, but new retailers would not be allowed within a buffer zone of schools of one thousand feet or within five hundred feet of existing tobacco retailers. Also pharmacies, there are three stores in Cupertino right now that qualifies pharmacies, they would no longer be able to sell tobacco products of any kind. So here's a grid which shows you kind of what some of the other cities are doing. As you can see, the first column just to the right of the jurisdiction, most other communities have a requirement of a local tobacco retailer permit. There are a few that restrict the sale of flavored tobacco products, and some of the cities that haven't yet acted are literally in the midst of doing it. Los Gatos is meeting tonight to consider updating their tobacco retailer permit. The county met this morning and updated its, and I can give you an update on that. In addition to prohibiting the sale of flavored tobacco cigarettes, some of these communities are looking at prohibiting the sale of all e-cigarettes entirely. So flavored tobacco, we talked a lot about that at the study session. Just to remind you, eighty percent of kids who've ever used a tobacco product start with a flavored tobacco product, and youth believe that flavored tobacco products are safer and less addictive than non-flavored varieties. As examples, I think we remember seeing some of these. It's not just the e-cigarette flavored things, which you can see at the back. Those are the e-liquids that go in the e-cigarette devices, Nilla Vapors, Candy King, one that looks like lemonade, and then it's also things like Swisher Sweets flavored little cigars and other kinds of flavored tobacco products such as smokeless tobacco. Just so we're all clear, we are including menthol cigarettes in the flavored tobacco ban. They are a flavor. They were exempted under the federal smoking, Family Smoking Prevention and Tobacco Control Act, but they would be included in this ordinance. So the comprehensive flavor ban would include menthol, would apply to all stores in the city, and there are quite a number of communities that have already adopted laws like this, thirty-five statewide, including four in Santa Clara County. So for the retailer location provision, we know that the density of tobacco retailers and proximity to schools is associated with increased youth smoking. These stores tend to sell products at a slightly lower price, and they have more advertising associated with the tobacco products. And so the proposed ordinance would prohibit new retailers, again, existing ones would be grandfathered, but new retailers would not be able to locate within a thousand feet of schools or within five hundred feet of an existing retailer. And staff developed a map here, which is quite helpful. So the yellow blobs, circles, those are areas that's one thousand feet from schools. So the dark blue shows the location of K through twelve schools, and so the circle is one thousand feet around the schools. Those are locations where retailers would no longer be able to locate. And then the purple blobs are showing where existing retailers are. So this right now, there would be seven retailers affected that are in the one thousand foot buffer for schools, meaning they could continue to sell, but if they sold their location or went out of business, a new retailer could not locate in that same location. And twelve of the retailers would be affected by the buffer zone around other retailers. So again, they could continue to operate, but if they sold or went out of business, a new shop couldn't open near, within five hundred feet of them. Pharmacies, here's an example of what some of the product display looks like at a pharmacy. For those who are trying to quit, if they're going to purchase their Nicorette, it's not very helpful to see all the ads and the products of cigarettes there. Also pharmacies are meant to be improving your health and well-being, and so it sends a mixed message for consumers. What the ordinance requires is that pharmacies would prohibit the sale of tobacco products. As I mentioned, this would apply to three stores in Cupertino that are locations that have a pharmacy, a Safeway, a Rite Aid, and a Walgreens. There are a few additional requirements that are included in the ordinance, mostly to align with the way the county of Santa Clara County has designed their tobacco retailer permit. Some of these are very common sense, requiring retailers to check for identification for anyone who looks under thirty, limiting the signage on windows and doors. So we talked a little bit last time that it's not possible for the city to prohibit tobacco advertising specifically, but if you have a law that just says it's really an aid for law enforcement to be able to see inside the store, and limiting the amount of signage that's on clear windows and doors to about fifteen percent. We completely prohibit the sale of tobacco products from vending machines. Those are likely a thing of the past. They are largely prohibited by the existing code, but this would completely get rid of them, and it would prevent mobile tobacco sales or sales at festivals or other events. So for the permit itself, the retailers would be required to get a local permit. This is on top of the permit that's required by the state. The fee is estimated to be four hundred and twenty-five dollars for each retailer, and that would cover the cost of the administration and enforcement. That cost, it would be verified through the city, but that's calculated by the County of Santa Clara based on the costs that they are incurring currently with existing retailers. And then the real deterrent here is that if a retailer sells tobacco to minors or sells a flavored tobacco product, their permit could be suspended, and they would no longer be able to sell tobacco products. So some folks have asked, why would we need a local permit if the state already requires one? The state has insufficient resources to enforce their permit, and the penalties are not as strict as what would be required in the local law. It is already illegal to sell tobacco to minors. It has been for more than a hundred years, but the sheriff's office has done youth decoy operations, and in twenty nineteen to date, almost half of the retailers illegally sold tobacco to minors. So that clearly means something is not working about the existing laws. And there's also data from many other communities in California that have adopted these laws showing that the illegal sales to minors decreased dramatically after a local permit is put in place. So the penalties that are proposed in the ordinance, for a first violation, a retailer would receive up to a thirty-day suspension along with a hundred dollar fine. For a second violation, that would be up to ninety-day suspension and two hundred dollar fine, and third violation, up to a one-year suspension and five hundred dollar fine. Those penalties mirror what's in the county ordinance. And the reason I'm talking about why Cupertino's ordinance is and is not like the county ordinance is because the county has agreed that it will administer and enforce the ordinance for any city that mirrors its provisions. So Los Gatos and Palo Alto already have agreements with the city, and this would be the intention of Cupertino in adopting this ordinance, that the Department of Environmental Health would take on the administration of the permit. They would monitor for compliance along with what they're doing with the existing cities that are participating in their program. The timing of this, we've had numerous conversations with the county about this. There would be a separate memorandum of understanding that the city would negotiate with the County Department of Environmental Health to really spell out the roles and responsibilities of the various departments. And even though the ordinance, if it's adopted, it would take effect, as usual, within thirty days, but the operative date, retailers would not be required to get their permit until July first, twenty twenty. That would allow time for the county to make sure that it has its procedures in place, and it also gives retailers some time to sell down their existing inventory if they have flavored tobacco products. One thing I'd like to note is today is a very busy day in terms of local government. In addition to Los Gatos, considering its ordinance, the County Board of Supervisors talked just this afternoon at around three-thirty and made some changes to its tobacco retailer permit ordinance. The city would look at syncing its ordinance with that law. So there are two, I think, things that are significant. One is the county voted to prohibit the sale of all electronic smoking devices anywhere, so not just flavored, any electronic smoking devices. And then they made some technical changes to the penalties and suspensions that the city would probably need to adopt in order to align its ordinance with what the county did. Of course, the county just voted today, so we didn't have time to prepare those specific changes, but we can talk about what makes sense in terms of coming back. And then I'll hand it over to Katie.
Good evening. So I'll be going over some of the outreach we did. So we had an online survey that started in September, closed in October. We had six hundred and thirty-nine responses, and four hundred and sixty-four of those responses affirmatively stated that they were residents of Cupertino. And so as you can see, there was overwhelming support for these various provisions that we've discussed. Most of it, people felt like this was needed. There were some comments about, you know, should we do an all-out vaping ban? The comments that were in opposition were mostly that some, certain people felt maybe there's not a need for additional enforcement if the state already has laws. There were also other comments that perhaps it's unfair to businesses because we're asking them to have an additional permit and pay an additional fee, and that another comment was youth access to tobacco should be resting with the parents and the schools in terms of their responsibility. But I just want to give you the breadth of the responses that we got. We also did a citywide mailer to make sure people had opportunity to give their input. We did two community meetings. I've outlined some of the comments that came out of those meetings. There was one suggestion for an exemption for adult-only stores, which we don't have any that would fall under the county's qualification of adult-only and primarily selling tobacco products in the county. So that may or may not be relevant for us. There was also some concern that the proposed buffer zone was not enough, that maybe we should increase it. There was another attendee that believed that the distance requirement wasn't necessary if the rules were being enforced properly. And then there was also a suggestion to provide training for clerks who would be selling the tobacco products. We also had two parent education nights, which were very well-attended, and we, the schools gave a presentation informing parents about vaping and what they should be looking out for, and the city also gave a presentation on our proposed policies and took comments if there were any. Mostly we're clarifying questions. We also took this policy to the teen commission, generally supportive of this. There was some concern that, hey, you know, students may go, if they're already going out of their way to get it, they may still go out of their way to get it, which, you know, there's some validity to that. We did talk about how online sales are supposed to have age verification, and that now new laws have been passed that the delivery and receipt of that package also needs to have somebody over twenty-one in order to receive the package, so that's going to be helpful. But overall, the commission ended up supporting this, these policies. They did recommend that we increase the buffer zone to fifteen hundred feet from schools. The reason that that's not reflected in the ordinance that's being brought forward today is in an effort to be consistent with the county in order to take advantage of their enforcement and administration. Public Safety Commission also very supportive of this. There was one concern that it's one additional fee for a small to medium-sized business to take on, so there was some discussion about that, but overall supportive. They supported these policies with one abstention. And we also attended various local events, Fall Festival, Bike Fest, Public Safety Forum, the farmer's market. We also tabled in front of the library, so we did our very best to get as much public input as we could.
Do you know what accounted for the abstention in Public Safety?
While they didn't state, it was the same individual who brought up the concern that I don't know if we should be putting an additional fee on small businesses.
And how many tobacco retailers do we have in Cupertino?
Twenty-three.
And we would lose three because of the pharmacy ban, right?
True.
There would be twenty, okay.
So outreach to businesses.
Or we might lose pharmacies.
Okay.
And I would guess that it's, you can make a lot more money selling pharmaceuticals.
But out of the three, two are already not selling the flavored tobacco, right? CVS and... Doesn't say, yeah.
And Rite Aid, I believe, did make a statement.
It's only Walgreens that's selling flavored tobacco right now.
There's Safeway also in our jurisdiction.
Safeway, and Rite Aid said that it would stop selling electronic cigarettes entirely, but it's still selling flavored menthol cigarettes and flavored little cigars.
You said how many are within a thousand feet of schools, right, existing ones?
Seven.
Seven are within a thousand feet of schools. So what's the reason that we cannot ask them to not sell them maybe in six months or a year? Why are they grandfathered in forever?
I think it's the decision that most local governments have made, that when they opened the business, they had an expectation that they would be able to continue selling this product, and so they have decided that they're willing to do that.
But there is no law prohibiting us from not allowing them to grandfather this right to sell tobacco, because I think the high school board members came to us specifically because there were seven eleven one block from high school, both Home State and Montavista and Cupertino High all have retails right next to them. So if we are allowing them to grandfather the right to continue to sell tobacco, I guess...
The ban for flavored products would still be citywide, however, so those businesses would still have...
So they still cannot sell flavored products?
Correct.
And if we sync up with the county, they cannot sell vaping device also?
If we choose to go that route, yes.
So it's only non-flavored cigarettes they can still sell? Okay.
Yeah.
But then, I mean, there is no law prohibiting us from requiring that, right?
Well, I might defer to the city attorney here. There's no specific law. I think it gets into constitutional...
Maybe in a year or so?
Yes, I believe you can.
We can?
So why don't you finish the presentation, and then we will, we have a lot of public comment, then we'll bring it back to council. How much longer is the presentation?
Just a couple more minutes.
Okay.
So outreach to businesses. We sent a letter to all the tobacco retailers. We followed that letter with an in-person visit to kind of make sure they received the letter and to see if they had any concerns. All the retailers were also invited to a business forum. The business forum was also widely advertised, any business could attend. We presented to the Chamber of Commerce, is generally supportive, and we also made a presentation at the Women in Business luncheon. So referring back to what the vice mayor was mentioning, Fremont Union High School District did have a resolution and issued a letter to the city urging us to prohibit the sale of flavored tobacco and also reduce retailer density, especially near schools. We've learned that schools are educating parents and students on e-cigarettes and vaping, and discipline is handled on a case-by-case basis. So for the recommended actions for tonight, we recommend that the first reading of the ordinance is conducted, that the city manager is authorized to negotiate and enter into this MOU with the county, and find that the proposed ordinance is exempt from CEQA. In addition, like was mentioned earlier, the county did make some changes. We would recommend that the council move forward with this ordinance, and then we will come back with those conforming changes at a future date.
Why can't we just modify the ordinance today and include vaping devices? What's prohibiting us from doing that? No, they already adopted the ordinance today.
So there were some concerns with the, it would be cleaner if it came as its own item, so we can very clearly notice it as we will be banning vaping products.
And, yeah, so that's my recommendation, is just to come back with a clear amendment. And I will say, it would not change the enforcement date or the need to get the license, so it wouldn't actually delay the enforcement of the vaping ordinance. We could still sync that up with the same enforcement date. We'd just come back after being able to clearly notice people that we were considering a vaping ban and allow people to comment on that.
Oh, because you considered vaping different from e-cigarette, so it's better to...
We noticed it in reference to flavored tobacco, a flavored tobacco ban.
So I was interested in finding out which other jurisdictions, if we, you put up the chart again.
Oh, yeah.
And what other cities are doing. It's... Yeah.
Okay.
So if we added a column here, and we talked about all sales of e-cigarettes or vaping, what would that column look like?
So far, as of today, it's Santa Clara County unincorporated area. At maybe midnight, it could be Los Gatos. They're talking about it right now.
Okay.
San Mateo County, also unincorporated area, voted today, and then there are a few jurisdictions outside of the county, San Francisco, Livermore, and Richmond.
My understanding, reading news articles, is we've had a number of deaths in the United States from vaping. We've had, does, does data suggest whether flavoring the, we're talking about the combustion products, right, from whatever gets put in this device?
It's heated, yeah.
It's heated, okay.
Right, yeah.
So not necessarily combusted?
Yeah, that's the distinction. The cigarettes is the combustion.
I see. But when these heated organic molecules get down into the lungs, is there any data that would suggest that unflavored vaping liquids are safer than flavored ones?
No, there's no data that suggests unflavored is more safe than flavored. I think that the, as you're referring to, there's a lot of news attention about the vaping-related illnesses and deaths, and the Centers for Disease Control and FDA are really trying to determine what the cause is. We know that youth are more likely to start with the flavored products, and so they're more likely to use them, but no, it seems to be other, I mean, they don't know exactly yet what additives. Some of these are THC, include THC, some include nicotine, some include both, so they're still trying to figure that out, but there's nothing that would indicate an unflavored is safer than a flavored.
If I'm an adult, and I'm a smoker now of tobacco products,
Right.
Does vaping offer me any proven safer alternative?
Yes. The caveat is, many adults who are switching from cigarettes to e-cigarettes don't give up smoking. There are a lot of dual users.
Oh, yeah.
So if I want to quit cigarettes and I switch to vaping, there are going to be slightly fewer risks to me in the long term, in terms of cancer and heart disease and that sort of thing.
And I suppose it could go the other way.
Yes.
I get to be a young adult, I start vaping, and then I move to cigarettes.
Exactly. So that's the much larger public health problem. The FDA has talked about how the off-ramp for adults is being overtaken by the size of the on-ramp for youth who might never have used these products, who might never have smoked. So they're starting with something that is more appealing or less of a disincentive for them, and so the public health damage is far greater because you have so many more people using the product who might not otherwise.
Just one more question, and I'll leave it there. The measure in San Francisco tonight, I read that Juul had stopped spending a lot of money to try to get it shut down. What would that measure do?
Right, so San Francisco, a few months ago, was the first community to say that it would prohibit the sale of electronic smoking devices. What they said is they would do that until the FDA approved something. So if the FDA at some point says, you know, we think that a particular e-cigarette is safe, then they would allow it. So Juul initially put a referendum on the ballot, basically undoing that law.
I see.
And they, they didn't take it off. They said they would stop opposing it, but it's still on the ballot, so I think we don't know the results yet.
Has the FDA ever approved cigarettes?
Yeah, they, well, they just approved ICOS, which is a cigarette alternative device by Philip Morris, and they, the cigarettes, they grandfathered all those in the market. It's the e-cig... It's the e-cigarettes that have to apply by spring of next year and demonstrate that they would not be greater public health harms than anything else that's on the market. And so the question is whether they would approve or allow any of those to.
So is the county, the action that county took today contingent on any action by the FDA?
No, the county action is we are prohibiting these products.
A stronger action than the city of San Francisco took.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Of course, they were leaders doing this some time ago.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, I, thank you very much.
Sure.
So, by the way, Prop C is losing by a three to one margin in early balloting. So the question I had is if, if we adopt the permit and the enforcement and the stricter penalties to prevent the youth from being able to buy um the products in the first place, what is the reason to reduce the density as well?
Well, I think it's the access. Um, so we know that the density is associated with greater smoking. I mean, younger teens don't, can't drive or less likely to have a car and so they're more likely to shop at places that are near them. And data from the county shows that almost half of youth who are smoking purchased their tobacco products from a store or from someone else. And um I think sixty percent of those were purchased from, from vape shops. So the idea is reducing the access as well as um the availability.
A question, first, you are saying that using vaping, there is less risk for cancer? So is that a sta- scientific study that concluded that? Why is that?
This is an incredibly controversial area. So you could find a study that says that, you could find many studies that dispute that. I think that the products haven't been on the market long enough for people to really know definitively. Um, but there is some, oh, it's even hard to say whether there's general agreement, but there is some, there are some in the public health community that on an individual basis believe that if, if I am a pack-a-day smoker, then my health risks would be less if I switched completely to vaping products.
That's, some people believe that, that, but we are not hundred percent sure that's true or not. And FDA hasn't decided that?
No, FDA has issued nothing on this topic.
So my concern is also, I guess, for access to, okay, even if we ban flavored cigarettes and, but then unflavored is still sold in stores. And for teenagers, if they can have access to flavored, they might still just want to buy a flavored tobacco. And we, as we know, you have done experiment, experiment, fifty percent of the stores do still sell to underage teenagers. So, do you think then by still allowing stores to sell cigarettes within a thousand feet of schools, actually, we're still putting them in at risk?
No, I think that it would reduce the amount that youth are buying. The statistic I cited earlier was eighty percent of youth who use a tobacco product start with a flavored tobacco product. And, and there are studies that show that many youth are using these flavored products and they don't necessarily know that they contain nicotine. For example, these electronic smoking devices, they think it's just flavoring, you know, some sort of chemical flavoring. So the idea is the flavors are, make the product more appealing, less harsh. They mask the harshness of the nicotine, they allow youth to smoke more, to not have as negative a reaction. So the idea is reducing the availability of the flavored tobacco products makes it less likely that youth would go to a regular cigarette.
Yeah, okay. Oh, by the way, I think Katie put in the staff report, um, the state passed a bill for mail-order cigarette, mail-order tobacco product. Can you talk about that, the new law that will be effective on January first?
Yeah, exactly, so Katie had mentioned this briefly. So in addition to, we had talked last time, if I go onto a website, they're supposed to verify who I am and against a database, you know, I enter my date of birth, they have to look me up and find out that I'm really over eighteen or, or twenty-one in this case. And now this new law would also say that once that product gets mailed to my house, someone over twenty-one has to sign for it.
Hmm, okay, that's good to know.
Yeah.
So what about secondhand smoke and vaping versus cigarettes?
Uh, it's bad.
Which is bad?
They're both bad.
Okay, so vaping has the same issue with secondhand?
Studies with the lab rats show it's, it's, it's bad on their coronary system, yeah. That's my non-scientific explanation.
Okay, so there's no study about secondhand smoke or secondhand vape?
Yes, there are, there are studies, yeah, using, uh, using people and using rats and mice. I'd be happy to follow up with any of these studies, yeah.
Um, so I, I've got a bunch of cards, I guess we're ready to, unless you have anything else.
No, no.
But make yourself available in case any questions. Okay, so I have, starting with, it looks like William Yang, Marissa Jensen, and Carol Baker, the first three. Is William still here? Welcome.
Hi, um, hope everyone's having, um, doing well tonight. My name is William Yang, I'm a senior at Montavista High School. So, um, both in our school and in schools in the um district, teenage vaping has been a growing problem, especially in recent years. Um, on campus, if you go into bathrooms, it's not uncommon to walk in on people vaping in stalls. And you'll hear stories about people vaping in cars, even um in the school parking lot. And I think the crux of the issue is that it's very easy to get into vaping as a student. Um, if you go on social media, you'll find videos of people like blowing cool smoke rings through, um, using their vape pens or um talking about new like vape flavors or vape products. And um when you take into consideration this marketing from like other young people and combine that with like these flavors like um Candy Crush or um Apple Pie, um, a lot of students and like teenagers will end up wanting to try these like vape products. And another issue is that it's not very difficult for students to get their hands on these vapes. Um, for example, some students and like classmates, they will like get vape products either from like local retailers and then they will like put it on social media through their stories. Um, they'll put like pictures of collections of these vape products in different flavors. And they'll either like sell, um, sell directly there or link to sources where like you can buy them. So, um, basically the point is that like, we're high schoolers, right? We're smart and um even though um like putting restrictions on like retail um around schools is a good idea and will definitely slow the um growth of teen vaping. Um, I believe that we should, uh, we also need to, um, like, yeah, we're still, as students, we'll, we're, we will be able to like eventually get around um these regulations and like be, still be able to like get our hands on these vape products. And so I believe that in addition to just um restricting youth access to vapes, I believe it is important to get teens to not want to vape in the first place. So, um, I believe that like a general sentiment is that like traditional cigarettes, right? Um, they're kind of gross, like they smell really bad and they don't taste, um, they taste really bad too. But in comparison to that, um, vapes, they're like these new shiny new like gadgets, I guess. Um, they look really clean, um, the clouds they produce are like really cool. And most of all, they have all, they come in all these delicious new flavors. And it's, um, it's hard to see vaping as like detriment, really, really detrimental to health because it comes like so packaged in like candy and it's like, it doesn't have that same, um, I guess stigma associated with uh like traditional cigarettes. And so I believe that uh by restricting vape flavors specifically designed to hook students and like kids and teenagers, uh, we will be able to like more effectively combat the teen vaping epidemic. Uh, thank you very much for your time and I hope you'll support these restrictions.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Marissa Jensen, followed by Carol Baker, followed by um Rosalyn Moya. Welcome, Marissa.
Hello, City Council, my name is Marissa Jensen and I'm a sophomore at Montavista High School. As a high school student, I have repeatedly heard the phrases, "I just want to try vaping once" and "trying vaping once will not hurt me," but the reality is that is not the case. Although we have many guest speakers come to inform us of the risks of vaping, countless students still try it as it is hard to believe smoking a cotton candy flavor will hurt them and they wish to have that experience. The issue is nearly ninety percent of adult smokers begin smoking before the age of eighteen, as it is an age where they can easily be influenced. The nicotine in many of these vapes are hu- are highly addictive and their harmless, and their seemingly harmless flavors can lead to early addiction. Many students at our school are trying vapes due to their flavor sounding harmless and fun. Although it may not be apparent because our city is filled with good kids, I'm here to tell you that we are still able to purchase a vape and flavored cartridges on campus. Other products are known to be harder to get a hold on to, but since flavored vapes are so popular, it is easier for students to buy as sellers often have them available. There are also known stores which students have told me provide vapes although they are underage, so I would not recommend grandfathering the existing shops as they allow easy access and have a negative impact. Juul has responded to comments about marketing flavors to teens by stating that flavors prevent adult smokers from returning to cigarettes. And although this may be true, the underlying, the underlying problem is that they are attracting students to these products. Thus, restricting vape flavors would be very beneficial for the high school community as it would prevent students from trying vapes, seemingly harmless flavors, and ultimately becoming addicted. Thank you for your time and I hope you will consider these regulations to help student health.
Okay, thank you. Carol Baker, followed by Rosalyn Moya, followed by Randy Wong. Welcome, Carol.
Thank you and good evening, my name is Carol Baker. I am the, the very proud resident of Cupertino for the last fifty-seven years. And I would like to encourage you to go ahead with what you're proposing here. Uh, I think it's a, an excellent idea. I'm also the chair of the Tobacco Free Coalition of Santa Clara County. So for that reason also, I encourage you to go ahead with what you're doing. Um, and to read you just one little part of a letter that was sent to you by the American Cancer Society. "It's imperative to include menthol cigarettes and other flavored combustible tobacco as well as flavored e-cigarettes in a policy that aims to address the epidemic of youth tobacco use." Four out of five youth who have ever used a tobacco product started with a flavored tobacco product and was, uh, when asked why, say they became, because they came in flavors that they like. Um, I really, really encourage you though to include language that includes all the vape, vapings. I, uh, as I looked at the agenda tonight, I didn't see any reference to vapes or e-cigarettes, either one. All I saw was a reference to cigarettes. And nowadays, youth are more familiar with vapes, just as they're more familiar with iPhones as, instead of telephones. Um, it's very, very common, I asked one of the youth that was here tonight, uh, did she see any vape using around her school and she just kind of laughed. She said, "It's everywhere." And we adults do not know about it, it's, it's something that's foreign to us, it's something that they're very easily hidden from us. So please do include the vapes uh with your ordinance that you're proposing. Of course, the most shocking fact about e-cigarettes and vaping among teens is now, as you mentioned, uh, that several deaths, uh, over thirty-eight deaths have been, um, uh, according to the doctors have been a result of vaping use. And over five hundred children have been hospitalized as a result of vaping use, but because of lung problems. Let's see, uh, oh, and the other thing is, do you know what chemicals are in all of these new vaping products? No, you don't, because you don't have any products listed on the package. Also, that was referred to this evening was that um one vaping or vaping would be less harmful. But one vaping product is equal to ten to twenty different cigarettes, so, so consider that also. And thank you for what you're doing and thank you for your time.
Hey, thank you. So, um, Katie, I thought we were talking about a separate vaping ordinance so we can keep this in sync with the county ordinance, is that true?
And, yeah, so we can bring that back at a future date. Um, and to reassure you, the current ordinance that's before you this evening is inclusive of all flavored tobacco products, including vaping products.
Okay, so a separate ordinance would only be for non-flavored vaping? Okay, and how, okay. So, next we have Rosalyn Moya, followed by Randy Wong, followed by Tanya. I'm not even gonna try, Tanya, followed by Tanya. Welcome, Rosalyn.
Hi, my name is Rosalyn, I'm a member of the Santa Clara County Tobacco Control Coalition. I'm also the project director at Bay Area Community Resources, a local organization. I've been doing tobacco cessation and tobacco control work for over ten years. Being with students as they struggle with tobacco addiction is heartbreaking. Whether they quit or not, they are in constant withdrawal from nicotine. They have a hard time focusing, they're, they become more susceptible to other drugs and their young lungs are in danger. I have since looked at upstream solutions so that youth will have access to tobacco products in the first place. And I've partnered with Cupertino students at the Anza College, high school students, as well as parents to address possible tobacco control policies and resources available. I brought some folders here and include a letter from um Oakland in terms of when they had done a, um, exemptions at tobacco retailers and some of the challenges that they had to face in forcing that. So it has some info on that, as well as San Francisco, when they did a flavor ordinance, they're just um letting you know that none of the retailers closed as a result of um their policies on restriction flavors and some other fact sheets as well. Um, and I also wanted to also add, since it was asked earlier how the harms are of vaping, I just wanted to mention that for every one per, they did a Dartmouth study and what they found was for every person that quit tobacco products, they found that eighty um young people ended up being addicted to tobacco products. And so that's kind of the trade-off from that, um, so thank you.
Hey, thank you.
Ask you a question, hi, Rosalyn. Thank you for all the work you do. So I think we do have high schoolers who are already using these products and many are probably already addicted, even if we adopt something today. How, what's, what resources are there to help the students who are already hooked? How to help them to win? Like you said, now they are, even if we get them on off easy flavored cigarettes, they end up back on real cigarettes, how?
From what I heard, I talked to some of the high schools here in Cupertino and what they said is they have programs that they send their kids to have been found with the devices and they go through a program where they, um, they have an intervention and they get educated on, um, on substance abuse, including nicotine and vaping on that. Um, they also have other policies that it's on a case-by-case basis. There is also a smokers' helpline that's now dedicated to help students quit vaping.
So the schools will help connect them to these programs?
Mm-hmm.
So for parents, as parents, I think when I ask students, they would always say, "Oh, I, my, I see friends using it." They would never say themselves are using it. So how can, is there any signs we can look for if they might be addicted and?
Yeah, um, right now, it's, it's, the smell of flavors, it's kind of have this, this really unnatural smell. So sometimes having, smelling those can kind of look around. Um, but it's really hard to, some of the things that we've done is I've shown some samples to parents so that they can identify the products. But it's such a technology that keeps advancing, it's kind of hard to keep up with it. Um, because the next year, it's something that's totally different. This year it looks like, or last year it looks like USBs. Um, this coming year, it's gonna look like um eye watches type of things. And so it's just, you know, it looks like makeup, so it's very, very hard to catch. And so, but they're not making this in their garages, these kids, you know, they're purchasing them from somewhere. And so that really is the, the, you know, the, the more sustainable way of um being able to keep this from the hands of kids.
Thank you.
Okay, so next we have Randy Wong, followed by Tanya Hayapapili. I hope I said that right, followed by um Dianocio, and I can't read the last name. followed by Dionisio, and I can't read the last name. Welcome, Randy.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Randy Wong with Breathe California and the Santa Clara County Tobacco Free Coalition. I just wanted to, you know, thank the council for, you know, beginning to move this forward. A lot of these policies would remedy the many ways that tobacco companies are specifically trying through product engineering, through mass marketing, and through having as much tobacco availability as possible in communities everywhere. These policies would really help to remedy a lot of those strategies that tobacco companies use. I'd like to reiterate the importance of really maintaining a flavor policy that covers all products, including menthol, so that tobacco manufacturers can't continue to try to get around these policies. And also the importance of including all stores so that they're kind of evenly treated throughout the city. And also to answer the vice mayor's question a little bit more thoroughly about resources for young people, that vaping phone number line that the state launched that Rosalyn mentioned, the state, I believe, launched that last month, and the phone number for that, for anyone who's needing resources, is one eight four four eight, no vape, I believe. Finally, I would just like to echo that, yes, in talking with some of the schools, we realized the schools are doing a whole lot through, you know, a scale of consequences through educational efforts, really doing a whole lot to try to act on this issue. We know parents are trying to do a whole lot, but flavors don't make it easy for parents and teachers to do the right thing. Action by the council tonight would really help make it easier for schools, administrators, and parents. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Next we have Tanya, followed by Dionisio, followed by Jan Parcell. Welcome, Tanya. How do you pronounce your last name?
It's Payapapili, so you are very correct.
Okay.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. My name is Tanya Payapapili, and I work with Breathe California and the Tobacco Free Coalition of Santa Clara County. I am a physician by trade and a public health professional. First of all, thank you so much for considering banning the sale of all flavored tobacco products and taking steps, you know, the extensive outreach steps that your city staff is doing. I do want to reiterate a few things. So our researchers took about thirty to forty decades to research and find out that cigarette use can lead to lung cancer. Now, think about the vapes, it's less than a decade old. We do not know what's in store for us. So there was a question that council member Sings had asked about the flavors versus non-flavored tobacco products. Flavors do contain a chemical called dicatil, and it's there in all kinds of flavors, like food flavoring and in these flavored tobacco products. So when you ingest it, your stomach is able to digest these flavors, but when you inhale it, your lung is not, does not have digestive properties. So vapes, technically, they are aerosol. If you inhale it, it's just going to leave residues in your lung, causing popcorn lung, which means your alveoli, like the inner lining of the air sacs, they're going to thicken and make it hard for the person to breathe. So that's just one thing. And then we do not know how many more chemicals you're inhaling with regards to just the person who's vaping or the person who's standing right beside, causing the secondhand vape effects. So this is all in the infancy stage, and I think you, you know, you're doing great by considering this issue and, because all this has to happen at the local level. The federal administration is going to take a very long time to act. So thank you. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Next we have Dionisio, followed by Jan Parcell, followed by Smitha. Welcome.
Good night, Mayor. Good night, city council members. My name is Dionisio Palencia, and I represent the American Heart Association as the senior director of community impact and health strategies. I'm here to support the flavor policy to prohibit the sale of flavored tobacco products in Cupertino without exceptions. This policy will reduce the access to products that are the tobacco industry's key strategy for targeting and addicting new smokers, particularly youth. If this policy is complete and doesn't have no carve-outs for adult stores only or mint flavors, we know that complete policies work and are the best practice of use today. More than eighty percent of youth that have ever used tobacco products have reported that their first product was a flavored tobacco product. The tobacco industry is actively and aggressively working in addicting new young people, particularly those from communities of color, with flavored tobacco products. And they know, they well know that grape, mint, cotton candy, bubble gum, and gummy bears mask the harsh taste of tobacco and are highly appealing to youth. This year alone, five million American middle school and high school students reported using e-cigarettes. That's an increase of a hundred and thirty-five percent comparing with two thousand and seventeen. These devices and their coordinated flavored nicotine products have addicted a whole new generation of users, creating an epidemic that is taking health and lives of our young adults and teens. It is clear that e-cigarettes and their candy flavors pose a great threat to our community health. In your pursuit and protecting the children's health and passing a sound flavored tobacco ordinance, we urge you to pass an ordinance free of exceptions. Thank you for your time.
Hey, thank you. Jan Parcell, followed by Smitha, followed by Bobo Kwak. Welcome, Jan.
I don't know how these work. My name is Jan Parcell. I'm a grandmother, a retired engineer, and an eight-year vapor. There is extreme disagreement between our scientists and the scientists of organizations closely allied with Big Pharma, which includes public health. We both have our studies. We each disagree with each other's studies, although not so much with the data in our case, the conclusions. The first organization in the world to notice the lung cancer connection with cigarettes was the Public Health England, which is their CDC. And they knew about that ten years before we believed it. Now, for the last five years, they have been saying that worst-case vaping is ninety-five percent safer than smoking combustible cigarettes. We have a lot of data about this. Secondhand vapor, unless you're in a tiny room, is the same as walking into a restaurant. Every single thing in there is in food. The amount of nicotine you could get in a closed, unventilated room with a vapor for an hour is a third as much as you could get from a child's order of fries. Because nicotine is in tomatoes, potatoes, eggplant, and peppers. There have been zero illnesses and deaths having to do with nicotine vaping. The CDC is not the agency in charge of this, the FDA is. If you go to their site, that's what they'll say. It's contaminated, illegal THC cartridges. They don't know what's causing it. They first suspected vitamin E oil, and anybody knows, don't inhale it, period. Just don't. But now, it looks like a fungicide that's illegal for use anywhere in the United States is showing up at something like eight hundred times the level that's safe. And eighty percent of the illegal pot e-joints purchases they're finding, and when you heat it up, it turns into cyanide, which is a lung destroyer. The CDC keeps calling them e-cigarettes randomly. The FDA knows e-cigarettes are meant to replace cigarettes, and dab pens are e-joints. When you go to do e-cigarettes, except for the Juuls, except for the Podver, you get an empty tank. And then, over years, to buy assorted e-liquid to add to it. For the first time in my life, I went to a dispensary. So far, there has never been one lung illness from a legal California cannabis dispensary. But when you buy that, you buy the cartridge already prefilled, and most of the money is for what's inside, and when it's empty, you throw it away and you go get another one. These are what they're showing are killing people except their counterfeits. There's a street in LA, they've had it on TV, it's a block long. On that street is nothing but stores selling empty counterfeits and counterfeit packaging for the purpose of drug dealers to come and buy and fill with anything they want.
Okay, please finish up your, I'm a minute over.
Okay. I'm going to check something real quick. The youth who were in the last vaping fad are now in college and showing record-low smoking. So this is a gateway out, not in.
All right, thank you.
One sentence. Flavors were there before kids ever got anywhere near e-cigarettes. They thought they were.
Okay, thank you. Smitha, followed by Bobo Kwak, followed by Afrose Khan. Welcome, Smitha.
Good evening, honorable city council. My name is Smitha Gundavajala, and I am a resident of Cupertino. I grew up here. I attended Lincoln, Kennedy, and Manavista, and that's why I'm so proud to be speaking here tonight in support of the proposed amendments to Title V, adopting the new policies regulating the sale of tobacco. Though I am speaking as a resident tonight, in my day job, I work as a youth advocate with the Youth Leadership Institute in San Mateo, serving San Mateo County. In particular, I serve as one of the co-chairs of the San Mateo County Tobacco Education Coalition. Both of these roles compel me to speak in support because nicotine addiction is a lifelong disease, often with the strongest roots in childhood. Big Tobacco, including e-cigarette companies like Juul, have long understood that, which is why they throw so much of their resources into fighting local tobacco regulation efforts, like the policies before you tonight. When San Francisco overwhelmingly voted to ban the sale of e-cigarettes in San Francisco City and County, Juul turned their gaze to San Mateo County and Santa Clara County is next. They have fought bitterly to have access to young people because a customer in childhood is a customer for life. Flavoring their products, selling near schools, and marketing aggressively to youth have long been strategies that the tobacco industry uses to prey on young people and strategies that are addressed in the policies before you. These strategies seek to lower the barriers to entry for tobacco use, and the consequences are as tangible as they are devastating. Young people are too addicted sometimes to last through class without taking a hit of their vape, often going to the bathroom or even sneaking a hit in class, exposing their classmates to secondhand aerosol and fumes. There is a reason the CDC calls vaping an epidemic. We almost beat nicotine addiction in youth until the tobacco industry found a foothold in e-cigarette sales. Today, nicotine addiction remains a thriving business when dependent upon recruiting youth as quote-unquote "replacement smokers," a term coined by the tobacco industry. The implications of this term are chilling. The industry's evolving strategies in reaching youth must be met with evolving regulation, which won't only benefit young people, but will also serve the greater health of the community. The proposed policies would help bring Cupertino in alignment with Santa Clara County's regulatory stance on tobacco, as well as San Mateo County's. Big Tobacco has entered the twenty-first century. It's time that we do too. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next is Bobo Kwak, followed by Afrose Khan, followed by Jeff Paulson.
Hi, my name is Bobo. I moved here two and a half years ago, and now I'm going to DeAnza College. I've been involved in cleaning DeAnza for a few months. The youth are often confused about the nature and addictive properties of nicotine. Two-thirds of Juul users don't know that their Juul always contained nicotine. I moved here not knowing that middle schoolers or even high schoolers smoke. I was raised without learning much about tobacco because it isn't something that we do. However, after moving here, I've seen high schoolers smoke outside campus and even in school restrooms. It was a complete shock to me, and I've become more interested in the law and regulations on tobacco. Getting to learn and do research on tobacco affecting teens, I am in disbelief that a lot of teens that grow up in this area don't know much about it, the harms or the properties of Juul or nicotine. There is barely any restrictions on tobacco selling or to the use, or use to the youth. I believe having a more firm enforcement would help a lot. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Next is Afrose Khan, followed by Jeff Paulson. And I apologize if I mispronounced your name.
Hello, Cupertino council. Thank you for this opportunity and to listen for all of us, for our support for this proposition. My name is Afrose Khan, and I attend DeAnza College. I have attended school in Cupertino since elementary school, and so I can firsthand dispel any notion that students in Cupertino are at any lower risk of tobacco and e-cigarettes than they are anywhere else, because I have seen firsthand that this is not true, especially in high school. I went to school in Cupertino and Limbrook High School. I watched as the years went by, the use of tobacco and e-cigarette products increased steadily, and soon by the time we were all seniors, it became the norm. If you were abstaining from e-cigarettes or nicotine or any tobacco-related thing, that was odd. I don't want to reiterate what has been said a lot, but I do know you guys were asking about how do e-cigarettes help adults quit? And I know you heard, for every one adult that quits using e-cigarettes, eighty youth are addicted to nicotine or e-cigarettes. And I definitely saw this. I saw students, starting with Juul or other tobacco products, and they eventually, their tolerance increased so much that they would switch to cigarettes, which we think is a thing of the past. Like cigarettes are, nobody uses cigarettes anymore, we have no smoking policies and everything. Well, e-cigarettes and Juul and tobacco products are a gateway into the past in that way. We now know that tobacco companies are actively targeting youth through familiar flavors, colorful packaging, and cheap prices. I distinctly remember my fellow classmates of South Asian descent being stoked to try out the new Mango Lussey vapes or anything of that sort. Why they wouldn't just drink Mango Lussey, I don't know. Maybe because inhaling it is more fun. But I definitely saw directly that the tobacco companies were effectively targeting youth in this way. The least that we can do is enforcing strict consequences for retailers that are selling to minors, which we know that they are. And in conclusion, I just want to say that extra protection can be added for our youth simply by controlling their accessibility to tobacco products, as we talked about, seven out of fourteen of the schools in Cupertino are within one thousand feet of tobacco retailers. So please prioritize the health of our youth, and thank you so much for listening to me tonight.
Okay, thank you. Next we have Jeff Paulson, followed by Barry Chang. Welcome, Jeff.
Honorable Mayor, members of the council, staff, thank you for your work on this. I'd also like to thank the other organizations that are working on the tobacco issue. First, as a public health manager with Santa Clara County, I was sent to an FBI-sponsored conference on biological and chemical terrorism. And the definition of chemical terrorism was the deliberate introduction of products into the public realm designed to cause illness and death. So I raised my hand, as I sometimes do, and I said, "Well, is the deliberate marketing and sales of tobacco products an act of chemical terrorism?" He refused to answer, but I would leave you with this term: chemical terrorism. Chemical terrorism. Second, this affects me personally. One of my close family members, who was an admiral, was dying of emphysema from smoking, and I leaned in close to him, and he sucked a deep breath of his oxygen from his tank, and he whispered, "Jeff, I feel like I'm drowning all the time." He knew a lot about drowning, and it was so sad to see him die of that horrible death. Now, I lost one of my twin boys to cancer, and I'm sorry to say that my other twin boy who attended Cupertino High School is addicted to cigarettes to this day. It grieves me. Third, I want to make this personal for you as council members, because we're all concerned about grades here in Cupertino, and the American Lung Association has upgraded Cupertino's tobacco- tobacco restriction grade from an F to a D. But my hometown of Palo Alto and the town of our city manager, Palo Alto, has an A. So I would suggest that we look at improving our grade. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Okay, the last card I have is Barry Chang. Welcome, former Mayor Chang.
Good evening.
You're the third former mayor speaking tonight.
I won't use up three minutes, okay? I know you have a heavy item behind this one here. I just want to thank you for putting this item on the agenda and encourage you to approve it, banning all cigarette, including e-cigarette. It's bad for the health. Thank you very much.
Wow, thank you for being so brief. Okay, was there anyone else that wanted to speak that I missed? Seeing no one, we'll bring it back to council. Let's start on the right this time. Councilmember sinks.
Well, um, just a question of staff. When we did the outreach and proposed the actions, uh, in the staff report tonight, did we have anybody standing up saying flavored tobacco products, let's go, we need to keep them in the city? I'm just curious, right? I mean, if I was running a business, uh, maybe I would-
Actually, when we did reach out to the businesses, a lot of them are understanding that this is a problem and something needs to be done. They were not so in favor of the additional fee that they would then have to pay in the registration.
Did they propose any solution to the forty-three percent problem that, uh, our, our survey found?
Not that was provided to us.
Okay, and so this is a proven, this is a proven means of, um, getting, uh, this kind of reduction. Well, I, I'm, you know, I appreciate everybody coming out tonight. Uh, I think it makes sense to move forward with this. Given what we've heard in the press about the deaths due to vaping, whether flavored products or unflavored products, I'd be prepared to follow either the, the, um, Santa Clara County action or the San Francisco action. I mean, maybe there is some benefit to society on net, but, um, it, it sounds like, uh, the best, based on the testimony we've heard, is that, you know, um, vaping creates a lot more problems than it, than it helps, right? Even for an unflavored product, so I, I, I respect that we haven't done the outreach and haven't noticed that part of it. I think we, we might go through a, a shorter process to, um, ensure that we have, uh, done the outreach on, on flavored. But it just seems to me that, um, yeah, all the work that I do on the air district, I'm there four, five, six times a month, uh, and was up today, um, suggests that putting ultrafine particles in your lungs, vapors and other things that really weren't intended to be there, uh, sure don't help, right? Unless you're, unless that's the application of a medication that's been rigorously studied by, uh, specialists who would treat us of certain diseases and, and goodness knows, we spent a lifetime, uh, my lifetime, I remember my mother smoking, and I, when I was, I guess, in grade school, I convinced her to quit. And that, that turned out to be, you know, a good decision based on the data we had afterward. Here we have a product that's being sold, it's putting these aerosols in lungs, uh, with no, um, on net. It sounds like there's some real harm being done, and we have deaths that are being investigated, and I think we ought to move forward with this in a two-step process.
Vice Mayor.
So regarding the fine in, could you, do you have the slides? I think it's like $100 for the first offense and one month's suspension, and $200 with, okay, ninety-day suspension. And that doesn't seem to be a lot. And it's at most, they get suspension, they never get their license repealed, and, uh, they can always come back and still sell. So it's, if we increase the amount of fine, can the county still enforce the law for us?
Unfortunately not. We, based on your question at the last meeting, we did a lot of, um, uh, research into what other cities have done, and some have stricter penalties, including revocation, but the county said that in order to administer and enforce the Cupertino ordinance, that the penalties would have to mirror what they have.
So that's easier for them. Okay, so then in terms of, um, I think a lot of our students go, probably go to smoking or vaping because they're under a lot of stress. And now, as we have heard, some of them are, it's, it's already a norm for, to, to, to be vaping in Cupertino High and Limbrook. My kids are going to those schools, so I wonder if, even if, um, we ban flavored cigarettes, the kids who are already, who need that release, stress reliever, might still go and, uh, smoke and get that tobacco from stores, since they cannot even get it online now. So if we don't allow the grandfather, then would the county still enforce? It doesn't matter for them, right? They just need to know which store is allowed to sell or not.
We don't know the answer to that question. It seems like it shouldn't matter to them, um, but we probably should ask them to be sure.
So, and so we will have some store that has a license that will be allowed to have, to, to sell tobacco, but some will not be allowed. So we'll have two types of license?
Well, for pharmacies, they would no longer be allowed to sell. So basically, they would be ineligible to get a permit to sell tobacco products.
But for new retail who are within a hundred, a thousand feet of schools, they won't be allowed to sell, uh-
They would not be eligible for a tobacco permit, yeah.
Yeah, so that means there are two types of permit. One would allow tobacco sale, one would not.
Well, it would basically be the city business license. They would have to get a license from the city in order to open, but they would not be eligible for a tobacco permit. There would only be one kind of tobacco permit. If you are allowed to sell tobacco, you're eligible for the permit. If you can't sell tobacco, then you don't, you can't get a permit.
Okay, so if we don't allow grandfather in, or maybe give them one-year grace period, then it simply means, okay, here are the stores that has a permit, here are the stores that don't have it, right? Supposedly, for county, the enforcement will be similar. They won't be actually calculating the distance, they will just go by, "Do you have the permit or not?"
Right. Um, I mean, I think the county would be calculating the distance for the new stores that apply so that they can make sure that new stores don't open within a thousand feet. Um, and then if, if I'm a retailer and I'm located within a thousand feet of schools, I would keep my permit for now, but under your scenario, I just wouldn't be eligible to renew that permit after a certain amount of time, if you want to give them a phase-out period.
Okay, so the thousand feet is property line to property line?
Yes, we would.
So we discussed this with the county. It essentially is from where the business location is to where the school's property line is. Uh, the reason why it's not specifically called out of the property line of the business is because they may be part of a larger parcel strip mall, and so we don't want to restrict them necessarily in that entire strip mall. So it's, it's on the business's location, that's how it's defined in the ordinance.
So the business location should be outside of a thousand feet of the property line of the schools?
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, yeah. Another question is, yeah, I understand for advertisement, we cannot, um, distinguish, um, so, but then, yes, maybe for the windows, we can say no more than fifteen percent, but often they put a billboard, they put those A-frames on the sidewalk, it's very visible. High schoolers walk to school, they see those, it's on sale, so they will still be able to advertise that's visible. Because the reason Rosa Kim, the Fremont High School board member, came to me was, kids can see those on the way to school. And then when they go into 7-Eleven, when they might be just purchasing something simple, but they will see cigarettes right there in front of them. And that, that would, um, attract them to purchase, or, so it's-
Some cities prohibit those A-frame signs altogether because aesthetically, they don't like them, they don't want them cluttering up the sidewalk. I don't happen to know what Cupertino does, but that's something that the city could do, is to prohibit those signs altogether.
Then we have to do citywide, not just-
Right.
-in front of, uh, um, then, can we just do it in front of the stores that have the permit to sell tobacco?
We'd have to look into that, but the idea is that you can't have content-based restrictions on speech. So you sort of regulate what kinds of signs, the size of the signs, and perhaps we could justify in the location, I'd have to look into that more.
Oh, okay, yeah.
And I think also, we might have mentioned this last time, but if the stores are no longer able to sell flavored tobacco products, it's unlikely they would continue to advertise those products because there's no reason if they're not available there.
But then the unflavored ones would still be visible.
Right, you're, you're limiting the area, but maybe you're also indirectly reducing the advertising, because if they're not selling it, then they're no longer advertising those products.
Yeah. Okay, yeah.
Okay, so I had a question about the, the $425. Where does that money, we collect it, or who collects it and where does it go?
So this would all be worked out when the MOU is negotiated, but I, as of how I understand it now, the county would be administering the permit, they would process it, they would take in that fee, and they would use that fee in order to pay for their administration and enforcement. Uh, I believe that we would include it as part of our city fee schedule, uh, when that comes around, um, but the county would be handling that payment.
So I, I was just wondering, since some businesses are concerned about that fee, if we could have something that says, "Okay, you pay the fee the first year, if you have no instances of violations for that year, then the fee is waived for the next year unless you have violations, and then it, then it comes back." If there'd be any way to do something like that.
I think maybe if the city was willing to subsidize the difference in the county's enforcement efforts, we might be able to negotiate that, but, um-
Right.
You still need to fund the enforcement efforts.
Right. Okay, um, let's see. Does our ordinance currently have any rule against giving out free samples of cigarettes? Cause I've seen like it, sometimes at fairs, county fairs, whatever, they, tobacco companies would hand out these little packs of four or five cigarettes.
It's a violation of state and federal law. I don't think it's part of the city code, but-
Okay. Um, okay, now-
They cannot give out samples for-
Correct.
Oh, that's-
Okay, that's all I have, thank you. Darcy?
Uh, I, I support the ordinance and staff's recommendations, and I thank everyone for coming out and giving comment.
Don?
Definitely, um, I'll appreciate all the input that we get at the podium, and, uh, I think the, the report was very good and comprehensive, uh, essentially really allows us to understand what we need to, to do. It's already been said so much, but just to reiterate, you know, what's really at stake is removing the likelihood that our younger generation are going to, uh, likely be, starting with tobacco products. I think without a doubt that as they mature and become older, they will be appreciative that they didn't start smoking. They may not realize what the rules were at, at the time that kind of, uh, contributed to them not smoking, but I think they really will appreciate the fact that they were able to avoid it. I think it's very clear that our residents are very focused on, you know, knowledge and health and longevity, and so they expect us to, to make the choices that are going to, uh, keep our community, um, you know, in a, uh, a state that is going to promote those things, so I support the, uh, the ordinance.
Do we have support to maybe, uh, ban tobacco, don't grandfather in the, the right to sell tobacco for those retailers that's already within a thousand feet of schools?
Uh, I wouldn't support that. Um, you know, as much as I would prefer that they don't sell tobacco, I mean, they did start their businesses, uh, um-
But times change, just like Lee Hyde. Would you rather Lee Hyde always grandfather have the right?
But tobacco is not an illegal product. I mean, adults are permitted to buy it, and, um-
Just not within a thousand feet of schools.
Well, again, the ordinance is to start strict enforcement of stores so they don't sell to the youth.
But the ordinance also say new retailers cannot be located within, so we should be fair. Why should we, um-
Because the new retailer would know going in that they were not allowed to sell tobacco, where the existing retailer would not.
But supposedly tobacco is, would not be their main source of income.
Well, I don't think that's the case in any of these stores.
You think tobacco is such an important part of their sale?
No, I don't think it's a, I don't think it's a huge part of the business unless it's, well, we don't have any of these stores that are just tobacco stores in the city, but, no, I wouldn't, you know, I think it's only fair to grandfather and the existing retailers.
Even like with one-year grace period or two years, so eventually everyone would be on the same standing?
Right, I wouldn't be in favor of that.
So I, I think it's a noble idea, I really do. I think probably, you know, we are getting to a point in time where, um, you know, having that easy of an access to tobacco that close to schools, but I would think that it probably shouldn't be combined with tonight's topic. I mean, I think we're real clear on the purpose of tonight's topic and the flavored tobacco and, um, you know, the, uh, propensity of our younger, uh, residents to start a habit that is going to impair their health and stuff. If, if we were to, um, bring up a topic like this at some later point, and also-
This is the, the same part, right? I think we have speakers who would like us to do that, we have, uh, comments from Tink Commission who suggest we wouldn't, it's the same topic, it's not like vaping, it's different.
I think, I think we do have a large number of residents that, you know, um, adults that are smokers, that I think we would need to bring into the engagement process and make sure. I mean, I walk into work every day, and there've got to be eight to ten people in the so-called smoking corral outside.
We are not banning it in the city, just within a thousand feet of schools, that's all.
Yeah, but I, I do think we, we should engage the community on that specific topic and then consider doing it. I think it's a noble idea, I really do, but I do think it should, you know, stand on its own merits and not be combined with this one tonight.
Okay.
I'd like to ask, the city clerk, conduct the first reading of ordinance number nineteen dash two one nine oh.
Can I ask one more question, sorry? I'm Chinese, so I need to know, what would be our grade if we match the county ordinance? We get an F right now?
Yeah, I did this last time, what do we, what do, a B? I think you come up to a B. Oh, that's right, you only get an A if you do smoke-free housing, we talked about this last time, so you could-
We'd have to pursue smoke-free multi-unit policies in order to get you an A.
B is good enough. Not for Chinese, I guess.
I would say if you could elaborate on that in a future council meeting, I'd be very interested. very interested. If it works in Palo Alto, if there are things that work in our surrounding communities, by all means, I'd like to know about it, and, you know, we should move in the direction of, you know, those types of things.
We can look into that. There is a grant that the county is issuing again to help us look into potentially multi-unit smoke-free policies.
So to be clear in the staff recommendation, if I'm a gas station owner, I sell my business to somebody else who's also a gas station owner, does that license transfer? No, it doesn't.
No.
Okay, so I think, you know, what we could expect over time is these locations that are closer to schools, as ownership changes hands over time, right, we will reduce the number of locations.
Yeah, there will be natural attrition.
Okay. So I have a question for the city attorney. Related to the sale of a business, and they would no longer be allowed to sell tobacco, could the business owner that's selling say, "Oh, that's a taking of my property"?
Well, my understanding is that there aren't any stores within a thousand feet of schools that only sell tobacco. I would have a concern if this was going to shut down the entire business, but this is more like regulating was one of the products that they're selling, which I don't think will have such an economic impact that it would affect a taking on the property.
Oh, and is this only within a thousand feet of public schools, or what about like St. Joe?
Public and private, K through twelve.
Because there is, I'm pretty sure, within a thousand feet of St. Joe, there are gas stations selling cigarettes.
It's on here.
Okay.
It's on the map.
Yeah, we could bring the map up again.
Okay, so that was the concern. Is it a, is it a taking when you say, "Oh, if you sell your business, it's going to be less valuable now because you can't sell a product you used to be able to sell"?
Yeah, it's, there's only a taking if it's reducing the value so much that it would mirror almost like a physical taking. Undertakings law, you can have ninety, ninety-five percent of the value reduced, and it's still not a regulatory taking. And so I feel comfortable that we're not wading into that jurisprudence.
Okay, very good.
Just want to clarify the county ordinance. So the preschools does not count or childcare center, because the Proposition sixty-four for marijuana also doesn't allow a thousand feet. That includes preschool and childcare center.
Right, the laws are different for...
So the county only counts elementary, private or, private or public, but K through twelve.
K through twelve, private and public, yeah.
Preschool doesn't count, okay?
Yeah, correct.
That's fine. I don't think preschool children would want to...
Okay, Darcy, do you want to?
Well, I just have an outstanding request for the city clerk to conduct the reading of the ordinance.
Great.
This is the first reading of ordinance number nineteen dash two one nine zero, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cupertino, adding Chapter five point five zero to Title V, Business Licenses and Regulations to Regulate the Sale of Tobacco Products, and repealing Chapter ten point two seven of the Municipal Code, Cigarette and/or Tobacco Vending Machines.
I move that ordinance number nineteen dash two one nine oh be read by title only, and that the city clerk's reading constitute the first reading thereof.
Second. Okay, vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
I move that City Council authorize the city manager to negotiate and enter into a memorandum of understanding, or MOU, with the County of Santa Clara to administer, implement, and enforce Cupertino's ordinance.
Second.
Motion carries unanimously.
I move that the Cupertino City Council find that the proposed actions are exempt from CEQA.
Second.
Motion carries unanimously.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay.
Could I make one more motion?
Sure.
That we direct staff to bring back a modification of this after an appropriate, but hopefully, brief period of outreach to ban all vaping products, sale of all vaping products in the city.
I would second that.
I mean, how does, we're just going to put it on the agenda, right? We don't need to vote on it.
Yeah, and also the smoke-free housing, right?
Right, yeah, I'll be, I'll be the second for both of those. Maybe smoke-free cars as well.
Should we vote, or are we better off just giving direction?
I think you can say that the council has a consensus to direct staff to come back with those actions, and we don't need a formal motion to receive that.
Just aware of the Brown Act and noticing.
Okay.
And just to clarify.
So what?
So we'll come back, we'll do some outreach for the vaping ban and come back in a timely fashion with that. The multi-unit housing policy may be a longer-term item just due to the grant process and also, you know, giving some time around this tobacco issues and policies for the community.
So maybe next year's work program?
Keeping in mind the work program.
Right, and that could be a grandfather, I mean, not a grandfather, that could have a time period that would allow maybe the apartment owners to transition to smoke-free.
I do have a question on outdoor smoking. I think outdoor smoking is not allowed, right, under the state law? Is that true?
No, state law doesn't address outdoor smoking, but I think Cupertino...
Right, within a certain number of feet of entrance.
So what's Cupertino's, it's within certain feet of entrance of pop buildings? Because we got complaint from residents who complained about their neighbor, this is residential area, their neighbor smoking marijuana, but then it's like smoking, so is that allowed to? I think smoking is allowed in, right?
It's within several feet, but we'll have to get back to that.
Yeah, that's not on the agenda now, so, yeah, we can get back to that later. Yeah, so we are, I don't know if anyone needs a break now. We've gone another two hours.